That letter back off, but you put one in all the packets, didn't you?
Well, yeah, I did. Not all the packets, but everybody got one.
I can explain it without.
What I was doing. You need one?
I mean, I know why. I don't remember the exact amount, fifty-nine something.
And I made the last quarter money this year.
About all money I'm gonna get this year. Didn't give me enough.
Sure. Still not. Was it enough?
I will buy cruise ships for that.
You can have cruises?
No, none of that to do with it. I cover birds.
Already?
I know, I can't.
I'll go buy a great, a great cruise ship for her. No kidding?
No, I said.
We're like old rigs. It's like old rigs. It's the most good thing that's ever been in the yard.
We made it.
We made it. But he covers more. That's why I said that. No, that's why I said.
I was offended.
Ms. Aldrich?
Sir?
Since I'm not hired the fourth birthday, we will find us one.
Sorry.
Can we move that up to Christmas? Cannot move some of that money into broken birdsy?
Not.
Not salaries. Looking pretty good.
We move it around salaries through commissioners court, but you can't move it in some other salaries or sacred. I know.
Or saving money then.
Sacred.
Charlie called in sick this morning. Well, he doesn't have a script number. Weird. That happens to him at our third yard. Always a lucky thing. I guess the second one, three. He said, boy, that was. At their age. I have a Jerry sixty-eight, Lynn sixty-three. He's forty-seven. Hard line. Hard line. They learn wrong on that.
Batteries is.
Just a guy on eight or ten foot line. You have nothing else to chase that.
You always have to go that question.
Well, the air. Let's push it. Missing. Call is made in order. Young County Commissioner's Court is sitting in a regular, sitting in a hall meeting Monday, July twentieth, two thousand twenty. It's nine thirty-one AM. This meeting has been posted in a matter of four time required, and all members of the court are present. If it is convenient, please stand in the hall.
That is great. Lord, we love you. Thank you for this day. We ask that you watch over us and help us make the right decisions for our county. We ask that you look over the world, the United States, the military, the first responders. Please look over them in this tough time that we are having. We ask that you bless us, help us make the right decisions for our county. It's nice to be asked to hear that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, what is staying under God, one and indivisible.
We are allowed to be here so that we can say this. Go to the plane, they watch. Personal, for the run. My call, young, nine four zero, two two one, two one oh seven. They wish to make comment or address any items by being on the agenda. Item number three. Proper comments, announcements, these reprisal actions, no action items. Been starting out this morning. COVID nineteen report. As this stand, this was as of. Like yesterday, people keep. In Young County, there has been two thousand three hundred and twenty-one tests. Hundred ninety-eight of those have been positive. We currently have forty-eight active cases. Organized them like that. And that's down a little bit to fifty-four, I believe. There are two previous to that. It's been discounted a week last week, although we did have. We did have three. Those people who were positive and who were hospitalized in the past way. Would be the more of you who go in virus. I plead. The county director, you have like four tolls that would be ready to be young county as. Does I change the date? One was at home in Marlin, Florida county, first one. One in live regional hospital. One that ground was perfect on it. And then one was. Apparently better compared to the last. That's COVID. One of them that came in late. Better than getting in the wax box, but. As later, the Bureau of County Judge Bullock, the act health employee pool operates in line on January, December fiscal year. And at the end of each fiscal year, review the financial status, estimate pool expenses for coming here and determine whether there is surplus revenue of claims fixed expenses and the need for revenue. Got notice here. I'll let Marsha speak a little bit more about that. It's a lot a little bit more, but it's fifty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars. For take surplus distribution.
What they do is they take the pool and they figure what kind of year they had. Then they pull each individual county within the pool to see how they did. And one of the big kudos I was told to us is our not going to the emergency room in the hospital. Our county is really our employees that that spent using the N D line. And this is evidence of the fifty-nine thousand. Yet between the pool money and then what our employees, that's why there was the raise in the. So I think it's saying that to the employees about listening and using that. They've done a great job to, and it's helped us a lot. So we got a nice little pat on the back for that for.
I understand there's a lot, done a lot of using.
Yes, that's the teledoc in the N D line. So I hope they stay with that because it's really, really helped us.
I've educated my employees on that. I want them to use it.
Well, and it, you know, we didn't have that before. It's just nice because they paid over the emergency room. It's a weekend call or night call. And he said, when I talked to Ernesto, he said, Young County has done great with that. We cut about sixty percent of our ER expense down, which is huge. So you're ten dollars for a teledoc and a thousand for it, you know, basically to walk in the door and be extra.
Every one is two thirds of a cent of their tax rate.
So I was real tickled with that and that, you know, we're doing really good, holding the line and the employees are. So that's a nice little fifty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Post bond, you go back into our bill.
That's what I just talked at the end of that. I guess we'll put them in there, but I'm gonna consult with my agent because he doesn't like a lot of extra money in there. I don't know what else we would do with it if we didn't put it in there. It is for healthcare reimbursement, so.
You know, we've done really well on the deductibles this time, so.
Did that, did that rebound? Fix this even reimbursement? Did that come stipulation on land or does it go back here or just count off? How many deductible reversals have we had this year?
Oh, my God. Get through.
What will we budget for next year?
I'm actually figuring that out, so.
There you go.
I'm figuring that out because we've done, had a few more than we had last year, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next year, we're doing fifteen?
Yeah, it is. I use it.
Budgeted forty.
But my problem is at the end of the year, I have a lot of employees that spent eighteen hundred instead of twenty-five hundred. Well, I've got to give them the A number. You know, we make up that difference. So, you know, I hate, would hate to take that away from them when they're doing things like this and working so hard at keeping the expenses down. So. Really work. This whole plan has worked really well for us.
I'm glad that they happy seen that. You know, for years, heck, wouldn't you worry about this?
They would not be on.
And then you almost wouldn't do nothing. And all of a sudden.
Another six hundred thousand a year coming out of our surplus wasn't going to work for us anywhere.
We had a, we have a healthier group.
And they, and they work at it. They've done real. We had several employees really been good with the healthy county this year. So we, you know, all of the little programs that we. And if COVID hadn't hit, you know, we had some more stuff. We were gonna do a health stuff for the lawn portion of the side. So we had to rein that in because we couldn't have them come out. So we, once we get this all, this passes and everything passes at some point, we'll get back to a little more streamers with all of that.
And I experienced hiring deductibles related to fewer companies. People didn't take care of themselves better for the smaller companies.
We had that. And we had a different dynamics going on. Our age group is a little younger. And I mean, I'm not, I'm the old one, so I'm not saying anything, you know, about that. But I just feel like the boys are working at it, they're a little bit up here, so.
Well, it kind of helps not letting anybody stay up the insurance after sixty-five.
Yes, yes. Which they pay those, yeah, because I respect. It, this is working out well at first.
Their coordination of Medicare is really good.
All right.
Thank you, Martha. And the other item that I just wanted on the email this morning, I think. Whoever twelve forty-six AM this morning. It's in regard to our hazard mitigation action plan. We received our H two O partner to contractor for the regional area in the development of this land. It also makes it specific to each county. Ron Murphy sent this email and. It was delivered by Texas Department of Emergency. The Texas Division of Emergency Man. Says, congratulations, Young County Hazard Mitigation Act mitigation plan is approvable pending adoption by a female. Please see the letter attached. Next step is for the participating jurisdiction to adopt the plan by resolution. Please see the sample resolution tag. Once the plan is adopted and the resolution is signed, we send them to me. I will send the final plan with the resolutions to Texas Division of Emergency Man. And then there is a link below it there. You can go get that very balloon stop, you know. I think about three hundred and sixty-eight eighty's. It's a plan real simple, another emergency operating plan. Class by hazards that we see in this county and prioritizes those. And it's a plan that. Is supposed to help mitigate the results of some kind of emergency that we might have in the county. Also a letter delivered to the county. The rest needs, so congratulations. Statement is concluded at the view of Young County Political Jurisdiction H M D. And the plan is found be approval pending adoption. So forth and so on. That's a very complete, it's been about two years in light or more. And it's what's preventing Young County from being able to allow its citizenship to this type of female. That related issues such as star shelter. Star shelters and star cell. Those kinds of things were a real cost. I benefit to that. I cost share on the place. That's the only thing I had with anybody else got. Got anything to mail. There was a meeting of the Young County Appraisal District Friday with the general public at the junior high gymnasium. To try to explain how, why, and what happened when the appraisals particularly Lake Graham, however, there was. The city was also reappraised as well. Hopefully, there were some people who got some information that they needed. The relationship between the taxing entities, the appraisal district, the state of Texas is one that's difficult to understand at best. And it's very difficult for the folks to separate you've raised my taxes from you've raised my appraisal. And the appraisals at Lake Graham for the first time in seventy years has the value of the property added to the tax appraisal. So if you guys get questions about that, know that many of them are blaming Young County because they still call it Young County Appraisal District. It is a legal process to provide you on the land. And it's absolutely legal. They bring it on the law. Yes. Yes, and they had, what was the lady's name from Purdue, Franklin? She was there. Would you make some copies of this? I'll give you a copy of the, of the law that they sent. And so it was a fairly hostile meeting at times, but people are frustrated. And many folks have, have got to make a decision whether they can afford to live out there at that property or not. Now that they're being taxed on the property value, the leasehold value, actually. So expect some, some questions and some agitation from the taxpayers about what we do here this budget season about those appraisals.
One of the biggest things that we brought up during the meeting was the fact that why would we do this in the year that we have right now with the pandemic going on? But they explained it to them, the fact that this goes on in January one, when the condo was doing good, oilfield doing good, everybody had jobs, everything was flourishing, everything going home. We can't sit down and roll and say, don't go half down the road. Now, is this going to affect next years? Yes, it's going to affect next year. But they're eating.
Well, I'll ask you a question. I think that's very good, man. How everybody thinks. What. What role does the appraisal board have, if any, if anything, with the side? That's two questions. We are forbidden to have any activity whatsoever infecting or influencing appraisal to chief appraisal. That is a completely independent process that he takes care of. The function of that board is to see that the taxing entities are serviced monetarily, that that business is run as efficient as possible so that our share of the operation is what it should be. And that's pretty much where we end. Now that being said, the board does hire and fire the chief appraiser, who hires and fires his staff. Now, whether, there's, there's clamor out there, of course, with all the frustration about the board should firing for not letting you know that he was doing this. There is no stipulation in his job description that says he has to report his appraising activities to the board. So actually, that's where the, that's where the board stays. It's kind of putting a rock and hard place. The lawyer is boss, and we don't stipulate what he does. You know, it's the legislature, our legislature creates those laws by which the, even the creation of the central appraisal districts. They created those back in the early eighties, I believe. Probably eighty-one, eighty-three legislature to end. We don't have anything to do with appraisal. Your taxing entities do not have anything to do with appraisals. Neither does the, the tax appraisal board have anything to do with that. Legislature makes the laws by which they follow. Some of those laws, they direct the authority to government agencies. Such as. Education Department, Department of State Education. They in turn create rules and then direct our comptroller, public account to oversee the actions of the central appraisal districts. The actually the chief, the chief appraiser. And they're. They're directed to find the market value of every property that they have accounted. Now, there's a few different appraisal methods by which those come to fruition, but there's also a market value tied to them. And they've got to be, they direct those chief appraisers to get those within five percent margin, one way or other, of a deep comptroller of the accounts that's there. If they, if they're outside that five percent range on the low side and they're outside that long enough, then they'll penalize the school districts. And that's happened, had occurred here in Young County. One time before that I can recall it cost Young County school a million and a half dollars collectively, I think, because of that. And caused a lot of dissension and all that to make a change in our chief appraiser. My point is that it's our legislature that creates those laws, that passes the duty to regulate some of those to the agencies. And then circles it back around. So that's true, driving the prices in Young County, Texas and everywhere else in the state.
And in turn letting you know that.
That's the inherent kind of drill in the rooms is if anyone really had property taxes, they should have done some school financing and changed that up. Of course, the unfunded mandate, we have everything to do with rent. And then they say that it's our fault that the rate is what it is, but when they hand us Sandra Bland and more probation and more free counsel to folks who are in, in court, that it affects people's taxes and virtually. The folks out here get nothing for it except to hire tax rate. That's not right. But that's the battle we have to fight here at this, at this table. So as Joe, Dr. Kerr, with you entirely, what you said is exactly what's going on. This is a, it's related, it's kin to what happened to Boston Kingdom a few years. Yes, it is. A little bit. Okay. Anybody here? Move on to item number four. Consider county ordinance from previous meeting divided thirteen from two thousand twenty. Are there any revisions, legislation, or direction? So move. Roger? Yes. All in person? Item number five, consider corrective financial report on tax on security. Do you have anything, ma'am?
There's an update on the securities.
Two, eight, two, twenty-four, five, twenty-four, fifty-six. I'll say. Mr. Riley? Would you approve? I'll say. Mr. Prick. Calling, pardon?
Aye.
Very proud of you. Item number six, consider all of the budget amendments and vouchers.
I don't have any subject due this morning. We have vouchers, tunnel vouchers, thirty-nine thousand fifty-six dollars and forty cents. And out of the general is twenty-nine thousand three ninety-four forty-two.
So move. Second thing. Roger? All in favor of the vouchers? Any vote? And that's five. Is there anybody else, Gerald?
No, sir.
Any special. The ground you recognize, special on that. Good job. I guess item number seven, I got an email. Mission five, said, we're working on that. We haven't got that completed or anything yet, so we'll push that on to our next agenda. Okay, item number eight, discuss, consider permit and policy need. Young County Road and Ridge driveway issues discussed in the June twenty-nine meeting. I'll quote that sentence. Okay, I'll open that up for discussion or comment. I think what we're gonna have to add to this is permit, I would say a permit, um, application, something similar to a driveway permit.
I mean, Bill Bass sent a copy of an application to me in an email. It was a four-page application. I think we can call to take that application. Consider, condense it down to a one-page application. Basically, it's just to inform us they need a cover, where it's gonna be located, and for us to write notes on the size and installation of the cover. So I don't know what we need to do about that. If you want to take that one I've got in the incident now. And I, I don't like, and there the property owner calls, they, they test, I think we need to. I'd rather us be out there whenever they say, well, this line's here or this line's there.
Yeah, but what do you want to do?
Well, you know what I'm saying? Are we getting reports? Okay. This is responsible, it's, uh, the property owner may install the driveway cover, or the owner is. Basically, responsibility to call eight-one-one, or might swing that over. Uh, eight, if he does it himself, it's his responsibility. Okay, okay. If the county installs it, the county will lose the eight-one-one, take this. But then also, in case he installs it and busts something that shouldn't be broken, there's a regulation saying you should have called him.
Okay, on this B, I said, Young County Road, Ridge Precinct, and I sent it over to the driveway, state roads or private roads?
Uh, yeah, unless permission is granted.
I understand private roads, probably. But, uh, like, when we do a part of market road, that's still a state-owned road.
But we're not supposed to do that unless the state allows us to do that.
Yes.
When they've been asked.
We need to, we need to put that in there.
Actually, we did that in partnership with the state.
Yes, we need to put that in there, uh, as long as the state allows us permission to do it. What do you think?
I would think adding to the state, not on private roads. They can't get those permissions to do private roads.
No.
State-owned or private roads.
But the state does, yes.
Okay, we decide that in, uh, rightways for state, uh, roads, when, when working in cooperation with?
With the state. But we do partnership together with.
Yeah, we say unless, or, yeah.
Yeah.
Unless, working in cooperation with the state.
So you want to make that change?
Yes, sir, let's make that change. At O B, after state roads, near the end of the sentence, unless working in cooperation with the state.
Yes.
And where are the, where are these applications that are needed?
Uh, the application will be probably of all the precinct offices as well as the digital office.
And if the digital would be great, so you can send it to them.
We can put it on their webpage.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got, we put on there, we let them, we put, um.
Can they download our cover?
Cover and install that for us?
If not, maybe we can just send it to them.
They can download it, we can make a link.
Okay.
For them to download.
That'd be the cheapest way to do it. You want, you want a cover, download it from our website, and then fill it out and give it to us.
Now, and we'll have a couple casers, people that are like me, that's not very computer literate. Sure, you know what I'm saying? We can just give them a copy, let them handwrite it out. I don't have a problem with that either.
You can let them.
He supposedly B or.
Or not, don't, hasn't been one, zero.
None of the covers being out.
But this spells out and stipulates that once that cover is installed, it is the property owner's responsibility for maintenance.
Unless we.
Unless we tear it out.
Tear it out, yeah.
So y'all buying the, you're getting that, like, in you?
No, no, they're gonna buy it themselves, and they're gonna have to deliver it themselves.
I like that.
That way, we don't say, so we take over with the.
What are you gonna do, Jimbo, if Joe Smith won't do nothing with his cover, and it's constantly backing up on the road causing washouts and stuff like that? Then we just have to buy one?
They just have to buy it, own it themselves.
Okay.
But that's, that's, that's a factor to the county's.
It is, right. Cause he's ran over five hundred times with his tractor and trailer.
We'll be a permit required, and we'll, we'll pay no complaints for it.
That'll seem just perfect. I agree with that. I was making sure. Is there something that just, there you hang into it? But don't run over it all day. It's gonna be a little rocky mountain road, just keep going through the ditch into the property. Just a muddle.
All the air on the road. Four, five.
And, and I guess we could institute that, should it become a problem. If they're moving to buy a cover, you're gonna charge them five hundred dollars, you're gonna have. Come back to Lakelet. Right. Haven't done it before.
Are there any needs that we see to the policy in general or to the procedure in, in light of that, on application?
I think the only change was that one with the state.
By leaving that I in there, if, if there is a homeowner that wants to donate that.
Yeah, that'd be bad. Well, probably, this, this doesn't say anything about needing a permit, so does it? Does it need to add that? Sure, there's a lot of counters. Um.
Sort of policy that you're here for.
Yep. I borrowed this from a couple, I had borrowed this from a couple counties.
Such a happy morning, who like policy?
The judge added to it, I think we got. Isn't your? Dale? Yeah? Yeah, call it Dale. Oh, really?
Your policy, so there is.
Need a second, man?
In shot, a buck shot, in that little bit.
Okay, uh, we have, uh, uh, yes, sir. I believe that we approved this for the changes mentioned.
Ah, hold that up.
Is there adopt this resolution?
And modify it?
And modify it.
And that's gonna be, um, permit required, no cost necessary.
May I, may I modify that one more time than what you just said? In number one, and since it says permit, does that have no cost?
Everybody ready to go on that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm, uh, my, we here, gun micro, we're on the line.
Yes, sir. On the, on number nine, I'm looking at a twenty-three-one Mac, uh, bottle five, horsepower, automatic. Considering my cost was already at twenty-five thousand, almost this year, maintenance, we need to, we need to do something. And I'm on the same lease program as you and Stacy.
What you might talk to him about, seeing your tires, see if you can't negotiate with them, with Chico Chump, position tires, right?
Mm-hmm.
Because those tires will last very long, basically, in a while.
Oh, really?
The tire is very soft, and they don't last very long.
Okay.
Is this a truck tractor or a box tail?
A truck tractor, yes. And that's gonna go on next year's budget.
You're gonna do a lease, but are you, you're paying down some money?
Well, no, no, this is, this is just a lease. It's the same lease that Mike, I mean, I know Jimmy and Stacy's on seventy-five a year, and it goes on next year's budget.
Well, can you sell that, I mean, two thousand?
And then I can actually put that money down on? Yeah, exactly.
Two weeks purchase?
Yes, sir.
General, we got a byboard thing?
Yeah, it's a byboard.
It's a state, well, I, as you're talking state.
The country contract, yeah.
And he is giving me a copy of that.
What's that bottom number there, that four hundred twenty-nine thousand?
See, I didn't understand.
Bottom line there, said four hundred twenty-nine thousand, six hundred fifteen.
I didn't understand what those numbers were.
That's the final blue payment added into that?
No.
Okay.
They don't weigh.
Oh, you're right, I didn't even see that!
How many, that's four hundred twenty-nine thousand?
They're adding three eleven, six sixty-three back.
Now, see, that's a dollar, right?
I wondered if that was something else that.
That one dollar?
Yeah, that's, uh, something we need to look at.
Would you ask him about that, 'cause I, yeah, I noticed that.
Are we?
There's an exception in that, if you, if you don't want to buy four of them, and now, well, you're not doing it, you know?
Let me just add an extra seven in there.
There's you.
Yeah, cause the truck don't even cost that much.
An Excel sheet doesn't, not add column, no?
Sometimes they, there's something.
They just read it.
The amortizations go to the top, seems to be correct.
The amortization part is right.
But I don't understand how they set the bottom.
The twenty to the twenty-four.
It looks like you're bothering somebody else.
Forgot to go all.
You know, the finger drainer, that's right, right?
That is.
Yeah, they cut and paste the wrong.
Yeah, yeah, that's heart attack mode right there.
Yeah, yeah, I, I thought.
Yeah, I'll call Stewart this minute.
Yeah, he digs it, that's just the type of.
So hopefully they start out that much.
And if I, what you said for them.
Yeah.
But would that change an alcohol steward?
It is a big deal, yeah.
You got four years to the fifth, I love any one of those. They're not sure if she's down there by you.
So would that change?
You gonna go, you gonna go for it?
Yeah, yeah.
What went to those?
I did?
Yeah.
Would that change, uh, that alcohol steward?
Okay. Okay. Does someone's gonna be work?
Yes.
So he has to stop?
Yeah, he had, well, he's having to get it from another, like, for.
Leader?
Yeah. I think this recent was.
Same, same as we did yesterday, okay. What I'm required, building our next visit. You mark that open?
Yes, sir.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Item number ten, discuss, consider request for bills on two thousand, nine truck, approved?
And, yeah, I'm gonna go out, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go out for about a month.
Okay, okay, so.
So our next.
Y'all doing gut deals?
Yeah, I'm gonna do gut deals.
Are you, okay?
And just see, if, if we don't get a whole lot back from gut deals in like a couple of weeks, I'm gonna tell her that.
Just for gut deals, if you'll, uh, yeah, just get.
Now, Josh said, no, Stuart told me that his father-in-law is trash, is trash up over in Wichita. He might be interested in this truck, too.
Well, Matt, do you wanna go out for open bids and do gut deals?
Yeah, that's mine, and I got all the information here. And then I'm gonna get you some pictures that we can put on gut deals to, here, you'll share them.
Okay, so.
Yes, it is.
Who has took them out and taken pictures? Two hundred.
Perfect.
Two hundred, two hundred and thirty-eight.
Actually, I think he has, and sent them to me, and I sent them to gut deals, it's time to bid, so, um.
I think that's what we did the last time. Got Benjamin coming out.
You know, we got, I mean, I've got a new, I don't have sign.
Promises he made whenever he asked us to participate, that they were coming out and doing everything they could on the.
Do you wanna open bids about August tenth?
That'll work. Well, well.
You like part, part? Hang on, one, two.
We got one on the tenth, how about, how about August the twenty-fourth?
Open bids on August twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Have them in my office on the twenty-first, by four o'clock, open. And open out.
Twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, next meeting in August, that last week, and the twenty-first.
Twenty-first, yes. I spent, we're looking to get appraisal.
We're open at ten a.m., is that right?
Is that what we get? Yes.
Is that texture?
I'll work that up, Matt, and let you look at it, and I'll send it to, like, a warren, and a couple of times from down there, I'll get gut deals. But Matt, I'm right, you're taking sealed bids and doing gut deals, correct?
Yes, yes. I think you're gonna publish your contract.
Yeah, I hope so, two times anyway.
I was trying to say, you do a couple of cash, or you get a truck.
Okay. We gotta let gut deals work out, I mean, if you get people bidding on it, it works out real well.
I was sending that to Stuart.
This is a bit of a time, I call people to their budgets, the county's budgets, and jeez.
Yeah.
I'm looking for my special friend to, um, receive requests for sealed bills on, I think, two thousand, nine truck. Due into the office, and I got it out for about Friday, August twenty-fourth, four p.m.
Yes, sir.
Friday the twenty-first.
Twenty-first, twenty-first.
Twenty-first, four p.m. And I hope you can open on August twenty-fourth, Monday, August twenty-fourth, at ten a.m., in this quarter.
There's twenty-fourth tonight. So I have to, I'll have to talk to my gut deals, because to now close that out, it'll be the high bidder, but I'll just have to let them know we're opening sealed bids too. And I don't, I've never done both at the same time.
How'd you go, rolling all your options?
Yeah, we don't have to take that. We don't have to take it, I mean, take her.
But I'll have to explain that.
Right. Yeah. Tell them I'm on fifty thousand for it.
Second, man. Those are the, sure, second one, make, make the volume, four, the, the, the bids, and, um, the opening of the, the truck.
So I'm close, that does deal, the gut deals out, that, on that crony also.
Yeah.
Item number eleven, discussing the replacement of a fixed heater on the C N M mountain.
We had a lot that hit there, back when we did all that lot in store. And, we got zapped again. This, Mr. Peters, who's up there right now, is one of the old repeaters from the old cherry park, was back when.
Who do we have last month?
His last month? Yeah, we got the one that. Yeah, matter of fact, he hit, he hit ours, but Motorola's is right there beside ours, and Motorola's gotta hit so hard it lost the plug, now it walks.
So you get a date from them?
I get a date from them, yeah.
Did we call them in church, please?
Well, I don't know that it's gonna be, I claimed one ten thousand dollars.
Are deductible?
Deductible.
I think so, I'm happy.
That's why, that's why I have it, but I can get the dates, we had them for record, okay? But, uh, this is one of those old ones, they can't find on the park for anymore. So my theory on this deal is that we can, this year, we do it, put one in place, use some of our contingency money that we had left over, and replace it. And that'll get us going for another several more years.
Is this gonna be an outlaw?
Yeah, outlaw, yeah.
With it?
Edition, I'll have that.
Does make one of the speed plates? Hope?
Yep, for about three times a month.
Really?
Yeah.
If we go to digital, then this will prove this one obsolete, wouldn't it?
I don't see us as a county.
Doing that?
Doing a little digital. You know, since we're still, the thing is, our radios, if you do get a digital, they would still have a lot of our digital in the way.
So his interest is not, uh, keep my time, uh... Not any need for that?
I would fight for a ten, maybe.
Is it, uh, all with the R and B? I guess General, County, did I write something for that?
Just, just one, bring.
That's just Commissioner Frigga?
That's Commissioner Frigga.
Is the talk around?
No, it's everything.
It's the everything?
Yeah. He paid Fort Worth, he paid Wichita, and you gave it up.
I don't know, the destiny before I sub, before I ensuing budget year or your current.
I'd say for current, except we live away.
Sheriff? Is that, I mean, Road Bridge County? Government, there, I got it.
You wanna see?
There.
See what we got? Y'all have that cash?
What'd you say, you were gonna take it out, then? What were you?
Going camp?
What, eight eleven?
How much is that, I didn't?
Seven eleven.
Seven thousand.
Two hundred and round two.
Seven hundred.
Okay, so on your cash position, I gave you date what's in Road Bridge General cash.
Uh, Road Bridge General, this is seven thou, seven hundred thirty-seven thousand.
And I give it on their last quarter, so the money's there. Just pay it out of line.
Pay it out of what?
Pay it out of line of Road Bridge General. I don't have that, I'm okay.
Does that actually, that means we're all paying for it, similar to that?
Yes, I've written that.
Three things will be paid for?
Well, if I do it in Road Bridge General, it won't, no, it won't come out.
I mean, it's how many comes in. It was done, new quarter, yeah.
I get that money and I'm just there for years.
Yeah.
Operating emergency.
This is Road Bridge.
Operating emergency.
Yeah.
And did you hear that?
Sixty-six thousand, four hundred forty dollars in the amount.
What point, hold on, I'm sorry?
That's R and B General, six twenty-three thirty-six.
Emergency.
Operating emergency.
Okay.
Does that strike a laugh?
Sound like it.
That one's a good one.
Sixty-six thousand. Sixty-six thousand. Maple Bay, Ohio.
I don't know where I hear.
Five in your pocket.
Which, which line are you looking at, Tom?
I'm looking, a lot of other folks are, I'm looking at the expense of course I have Road Bridge General.
Okay, O two O, six two O. What's the, what's the life of that number, six two three?
O two O, six two O, three three six.
Three three six? Is that two thousand six? I'm looking at here, O two O, six two O, three three.
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking at lots of the huge, but you're not good at it.
Okay, so pay it out of that?
No, if, I, I don't have, I don't, I didn't have, adopted budget, I don't know what that's in there, huh?
No, there was nothing budgeted in that line.
Well, that's what I'm looking at here, is off the, uh, fourth budget. I don't know, hadn't looked at it, never looked before that, nothing.
I was there, I didn't see my number.
Didn't have anything, I look up here, it's off, it's, it's, it's one of them.
But that line is there, I can see it.
I'm outside, I want to go.
I'm like motion to do it, take that. From the radio line.
Probably have to come out of Road Bridge, general somewhere.
Yes, I think that.
I'm wanting a terrible view.
On this radio, they'll get more color.
Okay. Stuart sent me a text about those bottoms, the number of the bottoms. The whim at the bottom of the quote is the formula used to calculate weighted average material for the IRS document. The quote above it is correct. So that, there's a, that form, that eighty thirty-eight G that you sign off on the IRS form?
That's what that's for.
The quote itself explains the principal interest as usual with guaranteed trade balance with rightness. So that's just, that's not really for us, that's for the IRS down there.
So the numbers mean nothing to us, or make no sense to us, but they're...
But they're on our sheets, so I guess so that we're aware of it.
Some of them are. Some of them may, they sit there, but...
Pick somebody, someone.
Commissioner, I think you're motionless to, um, move forward with replacement of that, uh, first step on that.
I don't, it Road Bridge General.
Okay, seven.
He said he guessed it, Bruce.
Are we, are, is all the fiber there?
I am, I am.
Okay, and that's made four, so we might note that. Brew that, uh...
Well, that takes a different meeting for, for...
Okay, is there any matter that's necessary to, uh... Consider on burning restrictions, I don't know, wait.
The last big fire we had was not, called the big body, but then, oh, breaking, down here, which streets. Plain primary line road, two poles, burn off about fifty acres as well, of course.
Pretty impressive from the horizons.
Yeah, forty service in, the distance terrain and, uh, the amount of forage there is what hindered it, so, and then the, the power lines, it's on the ground, it's still hot. So the guys had to be going around that stuff.
That's what I'm saying.
It's a good fact.
The lines are lighting off.
The lines are hot until they can get rewrapped. Three hun, I don't know if it's the three hundred thousand load or the hundred seventy-five thousand, it's pretty high, local.
Water over.
Same thing happened the same down last year.
On our bill.
Same deal, there are two poles put together, with the eggs in them, it just snapped, the load.
Snapped off the ground?
Oh, this ground, somewhere at the top, it snapped off.
And for a while they had all the crossbars replaced because they were all rotting.
Takes you, we gotta do something, like, some, like, this two years of road that's happened, so...
Wind? Was it wind?
It was wind.
No wind.
Just stress?
Stress, yeah, heat.
Maybe wood better, eh?
It's possible. It's possible. But I think it was about the same time last year it happened again.
Well, I'm telling you that I feel real blessed because it's a rarity that you see these kind of type of conditions, large conditions, this late July.
You don't know.
A lot of rain, weather.
How long has it been since you seen a guy that planned it, grow, and grow like it did this time of year?
Uh, I have, it's just been a lot of time. Sheriff's time looks pretty good. We need, let's take a little break before we dive into the...
We're banned.
Could you go?
No, I'm actually. Supposed to rain Wednesday. Posturing.
Hear it off?
Sixty-five percent.
Sixty-five?
Sixty-five percent, what mine's saying.
You know that, uh, Jack County is still almost half a billion dollars larger. Appraisal wise, I mean.
Those two fire plants.
Yeah, I mean, we can, but they are.
And they got about half as many people there. Sheriff, you should probably do a deal on the fair.
I'll talk to that.
Yeah.
Certainly, my, these are finished.
They let me. I didn't know, so that's why I'm talking. I haven't talked to you in a few years.
Yeah, but... We went out, we can use one day, or one else, I call them, and say, they come out, we all must be helping.
Red, red, baby. Yeah, the prison board there, yeah, prison board there. I asked that, our last meeting. Please, look, we've already jumped into the water.
A lot of, yeah, that's, that's the whole thing.
That's some new sheriffs out there. Easy, I got a new sheriff, I'll tell you that. And, uh, he, he shot with his club shot.
Yeah, it's, it's...
The TPS off, they unloaded it.
It depends on what you're asking them. As soon as he, uh, they come out there with guns, like, where's the...
They don't get through that, don't come out.
No.
Which house?
We've done all appraisal.
Well, it's a, it's a nice couple, he, he travels, he's with the, they're already ever there.
I called enough here, uh, about a hundred forty thousand.
He didn't do a cop though, did he? See, that's sometime I tried, didn't have. So you know it doesn't work, man. No, no, no. They're there, so it's forty-two stuff. They live in the small house. He owns Barrikow, passes through Barrikow. Hey, do you have your check this day right here? Yeah.
What if they wanted to have a hundred percent?
It's two thousand dollars a year, uh, inch, uh, taxes. They just put up eighty-one thousand on the value. So, I'm, I'm young, I'm... I don't know if it would help your interview. You mean, would you just paint it up in the center?
Yeah. Yeah, people coming up, you're basically, no, probably, highlight, probably, I do.
She's running that check, I don't know what you want her back.
No, I don't, I don't, we'll get the chair about it, okay? Third.
Might drag it over here, we might.
For over two hundred thousand dollars.
Marty can. I'm gonna run it. I'm not gonna run, I don't run anywhere.
It's not Marty's, it's...
Marty's right there. He's up there, uh, the trader, yeah, and he was going to...
And what property did he?
I guess he was, he was with, he was here.
It's hard to appraise this.
Parents, if you've got so much money, you don't have to do anything. He's one of those saving people, just, you know, and then I don't want anything.
No, the one that's been sold.
Because he's been very frugal with his money. You're in there.
Why don't I put these papers?
They're living together. They're living together a long time?
No, remember, they're ready, had kids by.
Or each lot, I pay nine hundred seventy-five dollars, which is more than I'll be paying on city taxes if they were six. It's pretty, I'm not the city's hope, but, and then we'll be the city's income. Something pitchforks, flying retorts. Yeah, it's a bad deal. No way, man. Yep, it's too big. Somebody said it'd be about a year, so... I had my eye, but then didn't look for the term over. It's gotta be more than a year, it's more than a year, then you can pass the target, perfect, it's a year. At least some were committing a knowledge tax, and they, they'll transfer it to the state. Now, if it was me, recently, I'd be a tax, um, tax, taxable person. It'd get complicated. Can you imagine some of those big ones? Can you imagine some of those things?
There are questions, don't worry about it. This performance will be all right.
Yeah.
Uh, where you lease through the block and run cattle or something. That's fixing to get changed.
Yes, sir.
So your cheap leases don't be sure, it's a pretty difficult deal.
Yes, sir, cause they're not taxable in. So that'll be passed to the leasing. If they say this, that maybe will.
But uh
They'll probably sell it.
Well, some of the things sold because of whether they didn't when they sold them to the V R A, they went, they kept
They could never be out of the V R A's name?
Well, if the landowner, if it's still in the family land, the land's still in the family now. They'll sell it, you know, they still have the right to rent it to use it.
So they have a surface estate on it as long as the family is
Right, I know that before.
Oh, they, lots of lawyers running that back door, you don't Yeah, they're always looking for white kids.
Yeah, like where my mom's and dad's in the V R A lease, it's right up, that's gonna follow.
Yeah, stop, get period down there with something laid out there for me. Sure. Who's named it, go.
His co-founder Bob Summers, he come out and they, they do all they do all the restoration of those houses.
I know Bob, I talked to him at this conference. He has, he has something to say.
You listen to him.
Listen to him. He has something to say about you. And some of the others, I took pens too, but
He's a, he's a mayor. He said he was out, um, do you need some pen, Stacy? He said he was out, um
He does. I bet that slowed down.
He said that many, when he was walking, well, they went somewhere and he was on, he called a certain pitcher, so I, I figured something to do with the word thing he raised. And he saw the shark.
That thing pulled him to Cuba.
Well, it was, he said it was, it was a good sign. And it was pulling in and he was, and all the people, you had your family watching, I don't know if he somehow got back there. And I get everywhere he said he was. But he said, there's a twenty-two crystal in that bag. And he said, they'd like to just shoot them all. So they wanna shoot them right in the
My brother, my brother pulled him out, seen how many coasters come after him.
They had a spitball out there.
My brother handled you.
He's a man. He is really good about sponsoring our, some of our meals at our training.
I'm not the one that's doing documents.
He's trying to get, he's trying to get some of Jamie's do some of her own documents for stuff.
Yeah, I know, those books cost a hundred dollars.
Well, she brought, she brought her ass in, I mean, she, she kind of, she handed to me, I go, she goes, what's your reaction?
Yeah, she told me that one time, it was eight hundred thousand dollars.
Eight hundred thousand, yeah. And I'm just like, oh, Lord.
Lord, can you make
So maybe she's like some of the older ones.
How sax players feel about that?
I know some of those records are in the interior, we never do something, but I got them.
So the county, yeah, but she is dealing the responsibility of like taking those records, but you don't have the money to take care of the records. So you let the records go by, and the county doesn't do what's expected of us.
What's wrong with that?
What's wrong with this picture? Your fault.
Somehow.
You know, you're in the same position as our chief of operations. You know, why don't y'all fire them? He's right away.
He read her. Well, I'd say there's a
Who's her boss? Aren't y'all her boss? No?
God, but one step below and up there.
Right. See, Risto's bringing you to God, right?
Yeah. There's a, there's a shouting, I know, uh, doesn't happen either. And they're in a big financial crunch right now.
Really? Are you doing it, John?
Um, I think she's doing the best she knows how. But there's some things that have come in, even on the H R side, she does all that too. That was saving a bunch of money. They didn't think about that much.
You have saved money that way, they won't save you any money on the other side. Wouldn't be a problem, that's not, you have to pay for it.
I can do something. Can you give me one?
This is a famous job.
Bob Summers, Bob Brown.
There's a fancy people there.
I like the blue one from Simon Chang.
The blue, bright blue?
Yeah.
You see that deal on the on the news with that black woman that's a preacher? Went to go exercise her ride in New York, where they painted that Black Lives Matter, you know?
So we do what?
And they arrested her. It's freedom speech.
Go on, what's she doing?
Said, we don't want Black Lives Matter, all lives matter, she said, who wants you to refund? We want to fund those people.
Was that the American Lives Matter, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Was she the one from Africa?
No, she, they arrested her.
They don't arrest you from
But as you're old, where? Those police officers, you know, they just doing their job. Because the mayor is doing that deal and the governor is doing that deal. It's that, they have to watch that deal.
Thank you.
Real loud.
Let me see, Marsha had given me those computer budget, let me see, she wants to know.
John, do you have anybody that wanted to present today?
You want to be
Do you have anybody that want to present today?
I don't know.
Do we need to give them a deadline?
Okay. I don't think we do. I think I'll send them out. Deadline.
I'll be here next Dan, would you know that?
Well, they don't come by last year, but it is, or whatever.
Use a copy of the computer request.
I think, um, Jamie, you got scheduled for twenty-five minutes. Bruce Burnham next week.
How many names?
Did anybody call up her and talk to Jamie?
Jamie?
Is that, you gonna call Jamie and says she won't do the hers today? She, she was waiting for one, still last day.
You never called any time, you never told Jamie that.
I talked to her and she said, no, she's waiting on some numbers for us. I'm shot nine, so I'll be next. I think that's what she said. Yeah.
Sarah, is the name of that email?
She said, does tax part, she called Sarah.
He said, is he, is this calling?
She said she's finishing up something.
I haven't done any, he had called and I didn't order it.
There you go.
Can you go get a
Well, Jamie can call back.
Who is it?
You can call us back in the session, ain't that here?
Let's go back in session. Let's go back in session. Ten forty-five.
Here comes first decision in the auditor's office from Grand Texas Young County. Beautiful downtown.
Doesn't it go to beautiful downtown part?
She's gonna talk about the O one, O one O fourteen. I'm sorry, yes, there's a copy at one.
We don't know what, in the world, what do you think?
Where? Who, of that?
No, we don't know.
Yeah, I think we're, um we're fixing to work on the computer that controls one of the touchscreens that unlocks and unlocks all the records back from jail.
Where's the two thousand dollars from the server going?
Where am I at?
Forty-five fifty-one.
That's the I C P server, that's our, all of our internet and all of, all of that.
One of the two thousand? That one has another eighteen hundred a year.
She hasn't got the quote yet.
I had to do that today, take care of, because of all this Zoom and stuff, I had to bump everything up faster because of the, you know, everybody's in the courts and Zoom and everything, so.
Is the email charge gonna be a consistent charge at a one-time, one-year charge?
That's gonna be a consistent charge, recurring.
The fifty-four forty?
The, uh, well, the email says it's gonna be thirty-five. That part, the other's the website. Uh, it's like sixteen hundred. We're gonna be paying, uh, on the email, did we figure that, right, thirty-five a year, what it does? Uh, here, I can figure it just real quick, cause it's pretty
Hundred, hundred and sixty-five.
Uh, we're gonna go based on a hundred and sixty.
Pretty definite figure you got there, fifty-four forty?
Because that's exactly, that, I base that on a hundred and sixty emails and my webs, my website service. Uh, I could, I could be as low as, well, right now I have a hundred and thirty-something emails, but
Thirty-eight fifty?
Yes, thirty-eight fifty was the, so it's really a little different from the one here. Okay, the hundreds, email addresses. It's email addresses, I'm sorry.
It doesn't been cleaned up?
Oh, yeah, I've been, when I got a hold of, we had three hundred and forty.
Yeah, I started, I was talking to John.
There were three hundred and forty. When I started, when, uh, Jake Gordon asked me, he said, do you want it? So I told him, he told me what I needed to do and I pulled it up. And he said, no one's been removed from this in about five years. I was just
I'm sorry, I meant to say two John Hoppings, I'm not getting anything from him, no.
Right. But, yeah, they're, they're gonna be two dollars a month per email address, but we will have all of the firewall, everything that Sarah has to offer, and they come highly recommended. And that's with the, we own our, we own our, uh, host, so we get to keep our Young County duck, or they're not gonna charge us.
So they're gonna have our antivirus and everything?
Everything. Where I don't have that now. And we, we can't get on the loose server and we can see it, but we can't be part of it, there's a lot of things we can't do. And truthfully, we're the only county that, uh, I think has, he has two other cities which he won't tell me. He said, that's a, that's not, basically, we don't get to know that. I know, and he does mostly personally.
So it can't use them for references?
No, I asked him a reference and he wouldn't. And so, um he uses a lot of free software for his malware and stuff. And we, at the level we're at, we have too much stuff going through, we don't, he stays. He doesn't cover ransomware, Sarah does, you know, that, that encompasses everything they have to offer.
So they're gonna protect us from ransomware and all?
They're gonna try real hard now, we can't, they can't promise it, the employee opens something they can't open, but they can catch it a lot quicker than he can catch it.
Can they promise we will receive that?
Well, no, everybody gets it, it's just, they'll have as, you know, strong as any you possibly have. And I've talked right, but because of where we're at, so it'll help a lot, it'll they come highly recommended, I've talked to several counties that has this, and they haven't had any trouble with their email like we've had. So we've had several get through on this.
Sure.
Yeah, I've got one, hold it now, I want you to look at, cause it looks legit, but I, I don't know.
What do you got, though?
It's, it's a, I mean, with this state in mind, we need every bit of protection we can get. One, one ransom, uh, one county said they ran, asked for fifty thousand dollars. And they said, they had us, I mean, what anything we can do, pay it, go on with it. But when they do that, they get in your financials, they get in everything, so they can shut us down pretty quick.
Yeah, you gotta be careful, you wanna talk about your invoice, is ready?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got a lot of those.
Yeah, I just delete them.
I keep getting tweets about this, I'm like, I'm gonna make a deposit for six million dollars, you want it in my account, in my account.
Well, it's like that, you told me one time, I got an email from you at three o'clock in the morning.
I'm not opening it.
I know, I'm not even, but
I'm not even letting you.
I got one from Judge Roy, and it looked so legit, but he wanted to set up a direct deposit and wanted something, and I'm going he would, like, he wouldn't email me.
I would get, right, I would get a lot more
Across the hall.
Yeah, I would get a lot more protection and help and stop a lot of this. I just don't, at this point, I feel like this is something we have to do.
I hear a lot of problems with for having I bet you it's good, I know, but I don't hear them all.
Nobody will hear a lot we have on the day-to-day basis.
It's mighty well seen.
Yes. It, it's insurance.
Also, this is the last year that twenty-two thousand dollars
Yes.
on that equipment out there, that, either we go on the cloud, and we're ready.
We're ready.
And we're on the list.
We're ready to go.
But this agreement was through Scott Stalls, who is no longer with Net Dad. But this, I looked and we had, was it four or five years?
Until we were ready to migrate.
No, there's a last year on there.
Well
We got to stay on there all of that time? When is it, when is it?
But the kicker on all this is that service has actually worked really well for us. We have a name, any. You know, when we call them
That was, my question was, is the company that bought out?
Well
It's a little better service than what we have.
It appears that with this new company, they're going to collections. And I really they're not, they're not going to be what they need to be, what Net Dad was to be. Uh, but I don't know that we can really afford to make a big move. I mean and that, even though it looks really expensive, it's about what we're getting for.
I know that's worrying.
You know, um
Don't think, you're spending any more money, you have to.
There's a lot
We got problems to face, right?
Well, updates and a lot of things we have to do, but Net Dad, the new company had to mend it as quickly as we need to, Sheriff.
So what are we gonna do when this, this, this contract How's that transition gonna work?
I don't know, because Scott Stalls is gone, uh, either they're gonna have to get us on the cloud and we are now ready. We weren't before, we weren't ready.
They raised for two years.
And then once we got ready, he was a Peter them, when we're ready, well, then Net Dad is not. We're ready, we need to get it done, but
Well, and this is the one thing I can say, and that is the thing, procedures, they, Net Dad had set bottom building, they had set all this up with all the procedures and requirements, spent all this money, and then procedures comes in and says, you can't be in a separate building, B B S does. It has to be located within a certain proximity, so they had to go by, right, by the sheriff's department, they had to just kinda start over. So that's supposedly what they're saying, they couldn't put anybody on cloud due because they're trying to work out the key procedures because of that.
Anything?
They mandates, and they said it cost them over a million dollars at that point when I talked to them.
And that pays that house bill?
I feel like
Well, should it?
Yes, so, uh, we don't really know what's gonna happen. I wish they'd let us stay at the twenty-three thousand with the server, the server's worth, well, for us, and when it runs out, let's
I know. Be right on the going plan?
I don't think we, I look for twenty-two thousand, that's the problem.
What are they gonna do to the server?
Scott made a deal.
Any kind of antiquating? Not everybody's on the server?
Well, there's work in some servers than you think. And A B M just kept this server up, this server's got all the parts on it, it's like two years, they, you know.
But again, you're, you're tied to that server.
We're tied to the server.
If our server crashes, you crash.
Well, but we backed up it from that.
I mean, so the cloud will take care of it.
Yes. Well, you know, they tell me that it's not a hundred percent full room, so.
I mean, well, it's a hundred percent full.
You know, I asked a question when we had one of the conferences, and I don't know if it's CIA or FBI or a class, and they were doing a deal about this, the cloud. And I said, I got a question. He said, what is that? I said, how safe is that cloud? He said, the only safe points at that cloud is from, from where it charts and where it's gone to. But he said, is this going in there? He said, it can be plugged out.
There's a lot of smart
There's not a, that's the only time it's not safe in the cloud.
From up, up to down? Pretty fast. Pretty fast, really, pretty fast. So if somebody laying in wait for it, they can barely go by?
They have a die, deal a separate timer.
That's all speed life?
It is. He said, that's the only place it's not safe.
Mr. Mustard, what they say, Scotland.
But the only things I've asked for, just if I know that's gonna, like, add in my email, uh, to Sierra, everything else is.
Did you meet your driver's warrant?
I live in Stoll, Haiti's back in Colorado, matter of fact, I walked the ADA through the list this long to do, until I got through here.
Haiti is the reason why, up through your federal services, he's safe, that's a hundred percent.
We had, had Peter come in.
However, he's gonna go back to college, and.
Yeah, he's not a long-term.
They might, what he's, what he's safe is.
But he will be back during the holidays, and he's.
I don't know, I don't know, God's gonna say, cool, good.
Well, and he, uh,
It's evening.
He came in March, you know, and I wasn't planning on him being here in March, I, we were planning for the summer, and, uh, I think he's been great, hasn't he helped you a lot, Judge? I mean, he's helped the courts a lot with all the Zoom, he's, listen, he's really a sharp little fellow, he's a good guy, so, uh, taught me a lot when I was all over, wanted to go.
He's got the right personnel for it.
Yeah, so, yes.
And you might, uh, give that fifteen thousand there, your computer stuff, and that's why.
Yes.
He always waits till the end, same.
I'm, I'm writing now, rotating some, and I'm having to rotate a couple of printers, I got a couple of printers on the way, I'm putting, uh, a new route, I gotta add five access points, because even though I up the internet itself, the bandwidth, we're going through brick walls and, you know, fallout shelter, basically, so I needed to put five more access points in because of, to, you know, they can get to it better, and I'm gonna put two on the top floor, two on, two more on this floor, and one more downstairs, that way it should.
So, mom knows with Wi-Fi?
Well, I have to, because of Zoom, I mean, I've, I've got a good.
It's good to be stronger right now?
Yeah, but you're in your bottom line, so, yes, so.
It's all, it's all.
They're so big, and every time they, all of them get on Zoom, uh,
Yeah, but they, they're working, they're working.
Or we see that, okay, the judge was doing Zoom, they had some kind of hearing going there, and somebody else had some Zoom, some kind of training, and then I had some, and they said upstairs goes, they started falling off, because they're, that's the last, and, oh, they weren't very happy about it with me, and.
But maybe then they can schedule.
Well, I'm not sure that.
Do what, sir?
It went to the floor last.
Yeah, it went to the floor last, yeah.
And then, yeah, it was burnt up.
It was, uh, because of my access points.
Maybe they start getting together to check it?
Well, it'll, it'll, I think, get these five access points in, or they'll find more, so it doesn't have to travel as far.
I think that's probably the reason the judge got a twelve oh three emails, because they're scheduled to be sent at that time when there's traffic.
Well, uh, I actually got a deal, I got five ubiquitous for six hundred and thirty dollars, because I bought five at one time, that's the best ones that we can buy. Six hundred, total, six hundred and thirty dollars, and then last week I had to buy a pole, the pole adapter in for five of them, and what was that, two hundred and something? So I'm gonna have less than eight hundred dollars in equipment to, you know, I'll have, hey, I'll have to run wire and aim, and, but. Just I'm doing everything I can do to keep everybody happy with all of this, with all of this going on, so. I'm not, I'll be honest, I'm not spending anything I don't have to spend, y'all know that about me.
We need to change the email to tag.
I know, I know. It is a good move. It's been, it's been a lot of work cleaning it up and putting everything together, but, and I've learned a lot with that also. Um, but I was tickled that we could be able to keep our Young County duck at order and not have to go to CO dot, Young dot, Texas dot.
Yeah, another. So we are gonna keep Young County duck order?
Yes, sir.
I don't like that, not TX, not US, not that.
We own that, we pay, uh, what was it, ninety-nine, nine dollars and ninety-nine cents a year, we look for that, or our EBS, we own that. And we do it five to seven years at a time, I think, or something like that. The judges, they're all good, helping me figure out some of this, actually, we've been on the search, no migration fee, and they normally charge migration fee, so that was nice. I've talked to them a lot, I think they're ready just to help you.
I think they should get off the bank.
Homeless lease purchase maintenance, three, what's that?
That.
Who's been, who's been current, this says a thousand.
That's some of the, uh, Net Dad's, uh.
Is there gonna be some more spent this year?
Yeah, the bill's gonna be different times, so, that's just how much all of that costs, I mean, I don't, there's no bill for anyone, it's just what it costs. Well, it depends on what they count and what they do, just they say, I mean, we get the bill, that's.
I'm with budgeting in September for a bill's gonna be due next August.
Yeah, but there's no way around it.
We're just thinking of doing a two-year budget one time.
And this is based on, basically, what it costs us, other than equipment, and I never know what equipment, so. And that is a shot, you know, especially that one little, I don't know what it was that sent me that little light in the surge, and I didn't have enough attorney, the insurance, but I had enough to.
I got the squirrel.
Yeah, the squirrel, yeah.
It's a high-dollar squirrel.
Yeah, I would add enough how much squirrels cost us last three, four years.
Expensive for the farmer.
Yeah. That's one year, nearly six thousand, seven thousand dollars, put an air conditioner, and two vehicles.
That's crazy. Any more questions?
Let's do it.
Was it about five thousand dollars, Chris?
Was that, was that email?
Cause there's two.
But I will try to hold it down as much as I can, and equipment, if I don't use on my equipment, then I, money will go back.
Is that any workers then?
Yes, yes, I see it, thank you.
Thank you. You know, we've kinda gone over hers. Five, six, three.
What page?
Thirty-four. That's what he's gonna do.
And, yeah, and, and. Don't know if I can get it. Um, nine-one-one, it's on page, in the one you're working on, this is sixteen, uh, down at the bottom.
Yeah, this is. Well, you said thirty-four?
Yeah, when I pulled the big one, it's her. Nine-one-one budget, on page sixteen, and the one you're working on. I got that fully set, I wrote.
It didn't work out. Where is that, um, first of all, I do for the road sign that they do now?
That, they make up?
Yes.
Down there on the five-six-three, four-oh-seven, that's for materials, they put anything in there, is it?
Not for years.
Address maintenance?
Maybe. And road sign materials, they give us, I'd like to add that ten thousand dollars. I realize it's not proven in court yet, but that's offsetting revenue line too, so. For ropes, for the address signs in the county, and incorporated in the county. Greg Speck had talked about, I'm working with first responders on this. Hi, Kimmy? Ms. Kim? Let's see if Rebecca's down there, if she'll come up, please. If Rebecca's down there, if she'll come up.
So she doesn't have any makeup on?
What they got to do with it?
She's still laughing. Well, good, well, good to see you on that cloud.
That's right. That natural light, you.
Yeah.
I think it needs to go, move to five a week, whatever's what I was scheduled. And if the car lounge is moved, and a mileage lounge put in there, the mileage all, and to case what we've been doing.
Look at mileage reimbursement?
Yeah, I don't believe if there's, you know, work down there, it's fourth, that, kind of, fourth, nine. Six thousand dollars. There's eleven thousand, a hundred dollars in there.
She brought in her shoes?
Yeah, that's what, that's what you do. You wanna go down there?
No, no.
I'm sure I hit it with my foot. Wait, wait, maybe we got.
What do I need? That other one.
Okay.
That's all, that was the one.
Is it?
Yeah, that, that one, that's a determiner, that one, that's here, not that one.
It's not lit up?
There you go.
This one's not lit up?
Yeah, it's lit up in there, yeah, it's on white, it's lit up.
We're good now.
That one?
We're good now.
The pockets, it's all, that's all.
That one's got me.
Right there. Okay, we got two.
Four.
Rebecca's oh-one-oh, five-six-three.
We got the dispatch one.
What do you do?
It cost us so much a month for this. We got maintenance on that, uh.
We haven't made a safe alert yet, cause it's due, but they, uh, this month, which is like a safe alert.
Safe alert?
It's not due till the thirtieth of this month, and eight seventy-five, was that this? I just got a reminder, but that's one of the last. I think it's eight seventy-five a year.
What's it, what, uh, was it due?
Well, that's one, that's the only one that looks like a head up in there. Other than your hot spots. The dispatch that we're doing, we could that up, take that up, so. Longer maintenance, I'll, yeah, I'll have a dispatch.
Longer than dispatch, yeah.
Ten thousand, two hundred, it's a dispatch.
Dispatch is five-five-five, sixty?
Uh, oh, one-oh, five-six-one, four-fifty-two, is that longer maintenance?
So we haven't paid it this year?
No, that's what we haven't gotten, and we'll see.
Is it gonna be the same this year?
Yes.
Ten thousand, so we, we didn't, we didn't have to pay that in my hand, did we? Not one year free, was it?
Well, they must pay it in, uh, team, yeah, we've paid it eighteen, they must pay it not team, and I don't. I, I wonder if they're just paying it.
I believe New York Texas paid.
They paid it, they paid it all done?
No, they, they started paying, that was my deal with them that I made, because they bought all the other region, the same one, and. And since we'd already bought ours, I made a deal with Tim to take over our maintenance.
For all?
For the, how many?
How many?
Yeah, because he bought everybody else's.
We'll need a budget for two thousand, yes?
No.
Well, we'll have to, we have to pay it, but we'll...
We pay it and then we reimburse back.
I think we should, should be on.
We need to, we need to get it on, uh, receivables.
Well, we do, it'll be out in the dispatch reimbursement, because, uh...
That's why I chose, you know, chose to get that thing.
Or the city pays?
I don't know if you have the city, but that...
You know how they reimburse, sal, I think they're just reimbursing salaries, coffee, or, that's it, I imagine we're eating all of this, but I would put the ten thousand in there.
But we send, uh, they send the invoice to North Texas, and then they reimburse us on that.
So it's a watch for this?
Yes. I think it was fair that they bought everybody else's, not ours.
They need to be fair.
So, that's what, I think Marcia actually got that, did that several years ago when we had the other equipment underground. That's what Tommy had done for hers, so I can't do that for us.
Who's that tire lease set for Solar Systems?
I don't know, I don't remember that Solar Systems tire lease. That Solar Systems tire lease on that tower?
Oh, yeah, no, it's, it's my third. The Solar System has gone away. Do we all need a budget? Do we all need a budget, twelve hundred dollar?
You're talking about Alan's two hundred nine, sir?
No, I was there for you. This should be a different.
That one we usually pay around two, you know, pay around two.
Talking about the, the, I'm gonna figure out here, the song. Going up again. Dito.
That's right.
Dito.
Yeah.
Cost twelve hundred dollars, do you?
Yes, sir. I guess we have paid them this year, yeah.
The Solar Company, or what they're making on?
Yeah, it's called Solar Systems.
The McMillan, I believe is their name. That's out on two hundred nine, that tower, behind the sheriff's, or, now, and they're not in contract there, doesn't exist anymore.
Okay.
Yeah, precinct one, it's at them, couple of years back, stacked behind the sheriff's office.
It looks like nineteen we paid it. I thought we skipped eighteen, but we caught it on nineteen, so we don't need to pay that anymore?
Solar, Solar, we shouldn't have been paying it for a long.
Well, that twelve hundred has got to be proceeded.
Oh, the Zeno part?
Twelve hundred is proceeded. Well, a lot of that, huh?
Well, we're not, we're over dispatch now.
Okay, we're agreeing. All we got, we got.
I don't know if you're coming out of them.
Dispatch, it is in the dispatch budget. We, we find, right?
We find, we chase the.
Squirrel.
Oh, Rebecca, I thought that one.
Rebecca's five six three.
I was right there. Of course, the longer maintenance is actually what's here, isn't it, too?
Yeah.
Is there anybody going up on nine one one system that you know of that year?
Not that I know of, I mean, they're switching.
They, they put an air conditioner, me and Ed, didn't they, out there?
Well, I was out there, I had to work yesterday for him, and, uh, I actually had to go open that door because it was a little warm in there. So I was gonna talk to him about that, but apparently there, there was a vent put in there last year, I believe. But they don't have it on the right temperature, or is it just with all that computer stuff, it needs, it needs to be turned down? It wasn't as hot as it, as it usually is in there, but...
Could be true.
Yeah.
Hey, Rebecca, my rock, I could ask me, um, because we used to have a line for road sign material, but don't we paint that out of address?
Yes, it's out of address maintenance now, or that is. When I order, you can tell it's not just, yeah, all that, but now we're using it for, for some, um...
Blowing the button.
No, it all comes out of that address maintenance. Anything, uh, KJ from, uh... Ordered a, um... The big rolls, ninety minutes for that address maintenance, not a lot of it, on the cutter. Thirty fifty a rebel. Now that's for the fodder, and it comes out of, uh, office.
Is there any computer maintenance you're gonna do up this year?
That is mainly for her, uh, her hot spots, so she doesn't have actual, uh, anything, that data.
Rebecca, we took down your nine one one addresses in the county?
Yes, I've probably done, um, close to twenty in the last three weeks.
Really, because, may mention it, Friday's meeting at the appraisal, they're saying that people were not moving to Young County.
Yes, they are.
We're not just inside, she didn't, she moved out of the county.
Yes.
That's really late, last October, isn't it?
But I bet it's close to twenty in the last three weeks of new addresses up there, and a lot of it's for new construction. So many, a lot of people from Metroplex, um, just in one, they're moving from, um, Nebraska. And there was another one I did, they moved here from Colorado, they moved out there to East Park. So, brought their pet springwood up there, three.
All right, Indian Springs, out that area, two or three people out there recently.
Yeah, I did one new address out there.
Nedland and Arlington and...
We did a lot of, um, Saint of Luke, I've done three, and they're coming from the Metroplex, well, one went from the other side of the lake, actually, but, uh, the two others were from the Metroplex. And they've been for some of the last month.
Reason I ask about, may mention that tax rates and tax burden is keeping people from moving into Young County. I just wonder.
Certainly, certainly, I've been down there, I think it's more or less the city.
Time to gather enough data to have an answer. You're seeing people move in?
Yes, they are.
Are you losing nine one one addresses, or do you know?
I, I really don't know.
You don't know that side of the city?
No, I mean, because usually once the address there, it's established.
Same for everything.
Then they sell it, but I don't lose their actual address.
I wonder anything else that they've established in separate residences or, um, places, places to get out of Metroplex with, I don't...
Those places won't have nine one one.
We're gonna find out whether our population's gonna let it down here. I don't suspect there'll be much change in, in actual population of the county. It might go up, it's good for you, it might go down.
Shouldn't you say that there was one address in the breast?
In the last six months, I've had two, I think, in California, so.
I saw a simple place, but people.
There's many people moving out, and there is movement now.
But people are also moving out.
There's two people, one from New Mexico and one from, oh, but they're not permanent residents.
But I have, I do have people moving out of the city limits to get away from the city taxes, and that, and that's what she wanted.
Those are better. There's lots of ones.
You get rid of the rest. People who, but they already have land and then just decided to move out and build on their land.
You done the nine one, couple nine ones after Garden Metro?
Yes.
Yeah. I've got people moving out there, but they're moving out. If we implemented this countywide standardized address, and you can do that at the time you...
Yes.
Did their addressing, right?
Yes.
Maintain it from that point on?
And that's what I've been trying to do right now, is as they build a, offering them, offering them a sign, and I've had that, and they're taking it, or looking like, well, I suppose, you know, it'll be a nice one, that rock, or, or, you know, kind of, you know, if you do something, I'm good with it. You know, I've been keeping up my inventory pretty well, so I haven't sent too much at once for signs and stuff.
Okay. We'll discuss putting some extra sign material in there, offset them with the size of the five dollar per sign.
Yeah, the five dollars is very much covered the cost of the sign.
Just wondering, the deficit thing for the county to do that. So you've been working with Greg, do you want to say you've been working with Greg?
Yes.
You've worked with E and D, volunteer fire departments, Greg. Make sure we get things covered that make it too harsh and complicated.
I've got some deputies, when they go on calls, if there's a senator marked, they're sending them to me also.
Basically, Mark's there, is that we have a lot of people working as first responders in this county that are not from this people?
Right.
And so, you know, the road names don't mean a whole lot to them, or the Old Smith Place, or, yeah, that's, didn't wildly happen to, they need anything. I understand people call nine one one, they live here forever, they expect the dispatcher to know exactly where they are.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of times I'm not driving roads, and I have to get the coordinates, and come back here with the computer, just to look up and see what their number is, because there's nothing, so... It is hard.
Yeah, I talked to a lady down in Ace Hardware this weekend, who has a friend over in Rice, and whose child drinks some citronella oil.
I saw that, babies in the hospital.
And, like I said, when your baby's laying on the floor with poison, and you're waiting for an ambulance to get into the country to you, you certainly want them to be able to find your address as soon as possible.
People don't understand that until...
Something happens.
Something happens, they'll say, well, I don't want people to know where I live, I don't want people to know I'm not from up here, I don't want...
Does that make you feel bad, like?
Uh, they actually, I think, when I went this one, they took him off pants. But he still had a lot of issues. I don't either. Let me get my life line. But yeah, something about the wicked gone out, and the ladies are, I don't understand, you know?
So that situation's not a wide end between. What's the night watch?
Saw a white guy, somebody about lit that copperhead, and they were climbing into the tree.
Yeah. Really?
Yeah, yeah, the copperhead was in the tree.
What was it, what was, what was it? Look, your neighbor, Jackie Berry, young and drunk, tried to drive himself.
She drove, she's in town, is she not?
She did catch it. Uh, she did catch it, she, yeah. Got him in that minaret.
Jenny and Bruce, and Justin Bruce.
Last name, what?
Bruce.
Bruce.
Bruce. You can't, uh, worry, little Andrew's son. Ken, he's got no barber shop?
Um, no.
Junior Mercy, she's got a cat or something?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know who they are.
How old was his child?
Oh, yeah, one.
Three?
Three, yeah. Four, one.
So Ken is married to Bruce, I didn't see, um, Ken is married to Bruce.
Yeah.
Poor little baby.
That's lowland, you're the son.
Looking at all these pictures, and I think, um, I think that hot thing just went down and...
So, I don't think enough for that child to drink.
Well, I think it was a, somehow the spill, and he ingested it somehow, from the story, I'm kind of thinking, well, they just drank it.
Okay, let's get enough of that, not that much, you got anybody to share with us about it, anyway?
Yes.
Just that little bit of that poison. I, I don't see the age, I'm thinking three.
The weight was about three years old.
Anyway, so we know the reason for it.
Said, um, they had the tin canisters with the old underforge, keep away the skin, and I turn around, and Jamie had knocked the link out, although I think he just hurt down, and tipped it back in his mouth.
Oh, he just missed him with one of his wickets?
Yeah.
Boarded his face.
Did what?
He got a board in his face, didn't he?
Sounds like it, although he doesn't have, you know, so it wasn't real hot, he didn't have burns, but...
Wouldn't burn at all.
Terrible thing to happen. You're having a fun drive, aren't you? Hey, after us. Seventeen months old.
Seventeen months.
Jamie Bruce, seventeen months old. If he's a small one, yeah. Anything else for Ms. Rebecca? You know, still expect the late lunch. And you said you did get them canceled from that virtual tag meeting, are you gonna watch the virtual, virtual tag? Well, Martin, I mean, we really were good, some things, they're on there that we want to watch, we're gonna go ahead and, and do it in office, I mean, there may be some stuff I want to see, some stuff she wants to do, but...
I believe in the policy, certainly, they'll be there first.
I like that you did do, but they won't let us come to it. Let us go. One or the other, it's like a raffle there.
What is the run rule?
But I think Rebecca's done the stuff to get y'all some hundred dollars, so they sent everything but a hundred dollars, so they figured you're registered, gonna go down there, that you're gonna watch it, so...
They kept registration?
They kept the hundred dollars of it.
You didn't want to go to sit there and watch that all day long? What is it, the Zoom?
Probably, for the tag, yeah, as far as I know, the October, I think, that's the one.
What do you mean?
No, uh, Emily.
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 She's still on?
So far.
Are you done that hours? What about you? Are you?
Yeah, I got mine. I'm always up hot.
You been lovely?
I got.
I like the education, but don't leave me out.
You got eight hours, I'll be done.
You got eight hours, don't need that.
Cause your other one got canceled too.
Hey, I heard somebody carried over.
Get the, uh, burn and do.
You got some from the steam building, didn't you?
I've got four, I've got more than that, I went to AGO.
Oh, that's true.
And then I went to five.
See, this training out here, now you ever, oh, the audit was fourteen hours.
Wow, so you're two hours short?
Yeah, we needed.
Fifteen sixteen?
Well, then I went to this, but then our October conference is still on. Well, our fall conference, the board's deciding this week whether to cancel or not, and I'm on the board. I, it, it's in El Paso, it's going forward.
In El Paso?
I'm a long guy. I'm gonna flap my wings, it was cheaper, it was cheaper to flap my ring wings.
Flap your ring?
Flap my ring, good thing.
Very intense. Very intense, thank.
So, and I did not.
I would not travel in a car, it's a fairly active.
Well, if we'd have driven, we would have, but we kind of frowned on that whole thing.
But your baggage?
You can get in there now.
You don't keep some extra?
Nope, I don't, I don't have a car.
That's a different deal, I mean, I've been to Mexico, haven't stopped going twice.
The hotel is right next to the airport, and once we get to the hotel, we're not leaving, we're certainly not leaving.
See, in El Paso, buy them.
They'll be waiting outside.
Shit, hang on. Go in the parking lot, buy one. I personally don't see one, shoot back out. Pass the period.
So, that's what he said, you got any extra back there that you?
I'm confiscating.
I'd be rattled, would I?
Yeah, I'll get it back at the bar. I could probably do that out of the trunk of the car, couple streets up. But they may handle that to the airport as you leave here, I need business.
Yeah.
What else we got?
Goers, we're going right for lunch, you can come back.
Yeah, let's break the law. Break the law, she's a German. Reprisess?
Reprisess.
The dungeon.
She has both ditches over there on RG Lou, he said sure did spook you. Any, got, got, probably didn't smoke the.
That eagle?
That's what I like, some people, how much you gonna pay off my taxes for moving to this? This way it's guaranteed to get money.
That's how they carry you on the road, I'm over all around.
You have any repair cell drive, six five ups or? No regrets, go, go on, come in.
Every time I have the trouble, I'm turning my legs back.
That's true, go along, are you thinking of going, go back here, send them a question, and then one hot now.
I don't know where I live, I think it's fine, it's, it's a good.
My group's lines are off, so, you know, we're, you know, we're headed for you when we live.
Yeah.
When we send their address, if we can pass them.
Pass them?
Yes.
That's a big move, sir.
Just cause their lines are off.
Mine is trying to, trying to make it on the Mary Lee instead of our place. And it has some sort of old road that goes up.
Some sort of, yeah, no road there.
It travels, but when they extract the location of it, it's, it's actually, it's actually.
Lock me in.
Let's, um, mine.
I need to grab one of those to my car.
Sorry, I just forgot.